Good evening, everyone. We're going to call to order the August 4th, 2014 City Council meeting. And we have a special guest to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance today. Normally, we have students from our school system that lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, but today, we have the Superintendent of our school system, Dr. Ann Kane, that's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right.
Would you please stand and join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Dr. Kane, thank you so much for leading us in the pledge tonight.
Yes, sir.
And like we talked about, when your students are here with us, I always then ask them a few questions.
Okay.
And so, we're going to have to kind of shake...
No, no.
Ask the same question. Okay. I'll ask the same questions.
Thanks, Weaver.
So, what grade are you in?
Let's just say I'm past retirement.
Past retirement. We are past, okay? And who's your teacher?
My favorite teachers were Mrs. Mudd, my first-grade teacher, and then my senior English teacher, Mrs. James. That was in South Carolina.
Both ends of the...
Both ends.
Both ends. That's wonderful. And what's your favorite subject?
Oh, my goodness. Science.
Science, okay. And always pointing, hey, engineers. Hey, they love that. And what do you like to do outside of school for fun?
For fun, I mow the yard in our house. For 36 years, I've done that. I mow the yard. It's cheap therapy. And I love to ride my bike. I'm a big cyclist in Stillwater. Love to read.
Wonderful.
And then, of course, my family. I have a lot of time with my family.
All right. Well, thank you very much for leading us in the pledge.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Appreciate what you do for the city of Stillwater. Okay. We do have two proclamations this evening. And our first is with Judith Carmen and Net and Mona.
That's just an ad.
We do a proclamation with Judith Carmen Hospice in a fundraiser that they are doing this week. Whereas on August 4th through 8th, Judith Carmen Hospice will come together to hold a Too Hot to Cook fundraiser. And whereas Stillwater Restaurants, Old School Bagel, Thai Cafe, Granny's, Freddie Paul's, Da Vinci's, Chili's, and Rib Crib will donate 10% of their proceeds on designated times and days during the week of August 4th through 8th to the Judith Carmen Hospice. And whereas the Stillwater community and families have benefited from the non-for-profit services of the local Judith Carmen Hospice to care for terminally ill patients since 1979. And whereas every day Judith Carmen Hospice makes a big difference in the comfort and quality of life of the patient and family members, and we value what they are doing. Now therefore, I, John Bartley, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim August 4th through 8th in the City of Stillwater as Too Hot to Cook Week and urge my fellow citizens to dine at the participating restaurants and to recognize the crucial role played by Judith Carmen Hospice in our community. Thank you very much.
I just came in from the outside, a hot car that's in the parking lot all day. It is too hot to cook out there, so please join us at the numerous restaurants this week. We appreciate your participation, okay? And thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And our second proclamation... Where's... There's Bob. Come on up, Lieutenant. Okay. We are only going to be doing one proclamation tonight, but we do have several firefighters that are retiring. And tonight, we're going to be celebrating with Bob Charles and celebrating his retirement. So, here's our proclamation. And you've got lots of folks here. You want to bring them up now or later?
I don't know how it's supposed to work, so...
However you want it to work.
They can come up now or... It doesn't matter. Do you want it to just stay at this?
We'll bring them up here in a minute. We'll bring them up here in a minute.
This is out of my league here.
Whereas the Stillwater Fire Department has always answered the calls for help from the citizens of our community in a selfless and heroic manner. And whereas the delivery of fire and medical services can put our firefighters in harm's way. Whereas Fire Lieutenants are charged with responsibility of protecting their assigned personnel and developing the firefighters into the leaders of tomorrow. And whereas the role of Fire Lieutenant is critical to safe and effective Fire Department operations. And whereas to be a successful Fire Lieutenant requires individuals with exceptional leadership ability in very dangerous situations. And whereas acknowledging those individuals who have excelled in the position of Fire Lieutenant and served as a positive role model upon their retirement is a distinctive honor. Now therefore, I, John Bartley, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim and acknowledge the 29 years and 10 months of service that Fire Lieutenant Robert D. Charles has given our community. Further, that Lieutenant Charles has faithfully and diligently carried out his duties in a manner that is a credit to the fire service and has protected our citizens and firefighters from harm. I call upon the people of this great community to join me in congratulating Lieutenant Charles on his distinguished career and wishing him a long and happy retirement. Now, I was told about a certain incident a few years ago where you, using proper technique, we have actual evidenced, no doubt about it, proof of saving a citizen of our community when you did rescue a person, pulled them out of a fire from 40 North Apartments. We are honored for your service, and specifically that one incident, but there are too many to count of how you have served our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll put you up to you.
I'm not used to this. Yeah, I did that. Thank you very much. It was a good time. Life goes on.
All right. Well, let's pull your family up here and let's get some pictures of you. I know your mom and dad are here, so let's bring them up. in the newspaper?
I'm not supposed to change direct quotes, though.
Okay. Well, if you have the opportunity to interview later, if you... Yeah, there you go. There you go. Thank you, Bob. While they were unable to attend tonight, we also have Battalion Chief Jay Willis and Captain Kelly Williams that will also be retiring after almost 30 years of service. And that is a lot of knowledge and a lot of experience that have served our community. And so, we'd like to thank them, thank them for all their service, and congratulate them on a great career and wish them well in their next endeavors. That's going to take us down to the consent docket, and we have items A through E on the consent docket. Any items that anyone wish to pull from the consent docket? Is there a motion on the consent docket?
Motion to approve this consent docket.
Second. And a motion and second on the consent docket. And that is approved four to zero. And it'll take us down to public hearings, and we do have one public hearing in regard to a request from Robert Moore for certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate Green Machine Taxi. Mr. Dorman, do we have good notice?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, you'll find in your packet that Mr. Moore did submit all of the required documentation that is outlined in our city ordinances in Article 2, Sections 43 and 3, 4, 5, 6, and 35. The application is ours, his routes and fares, all requirements were met, and he is applying for the permit to do business as Green Machine Taxi Company in Stillwater. And so, the findings are that he did comply and meets all the requirements of the city council.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay. Any questions, Mr. Galloway?
No.
Okay. Well, we will open up the public hearing, and we've had no one submit a request to speak in favor or against this application, and so we will close the public hearing and...
Staff recommendation is to approve the application for Green Machine Taxi Company.
I so move.
Second.
A motion and a second.
Question.
Mr. Murray, yes?
I'm here on behalf of Dr. Moore. Is it imperative that it's an individual's name, or could he applied for a Future Corp. II LLC to hold the license? Does the statute of the City of Stillwater require an individual to hold the license?
Mr. Dorman?
Having not had this question posed to me till just now, I will have to research that, but I believe the license has to be held in an individual's name.
Okay. I trust Mr. Dorman, so that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second.
We already voted, didn't we? We didn't vote?
I didn't vote.
I had one vote, and then we had a speaker come in.
Oh, I didn't realize it had gone to...
We were hot.
We were hot.
Can we...
Procedurally, Mr. Dorman, how...
Keep voting. Voting's not complete yet.
My light's off, so I think I'm registered.
You may have to cue it back up.
We may have to take that vote again, if that's okay?
That's fine. It's a equipment malfunction, so...
All right. We'll get there. Actually, in the meantime, Mr. Galloway, I think this would be a good time. This whole ordinance of coming to City Council for a taxicab permit, is that something that really... Is that city ordinance that causes that, or is that state law that causes that?
It is city ordinance. I've just begun discussions with Mr. Dorman. Mr. Dorman has agreed to research it. It appears to me that it's pretty routine.
It's pretty administrative.
And if they need all the requirements, I think it can be done administratively. I don't... I think we need to look and see if there's any state law restrictions. I don't believe there are, but I could be wrong. Mr. Dorman will research that, and if possible, if the council would desire, we can bring back an amendment to the ordinance as to where this can be handled administratively. It would be much more expedient for the applicant, and I see no reason why it would be required public.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So, we had a motion and a second to approve the application. And that is approved four to zero. Okay. That's going to take us down to general orders. Consider Convention and Visitor Bureau Advisory Board recommendation to amend FY 2015 CVB budget.
The report in your packet and our CBP Director, Kristy Morrison, is here. Do you have any questions?
Hello, Kristy Morrison, Convention and Visitors Bureau here in Stillwater. You have before you a request for a budget amendment to purchase a web-based destination management system. These are technical, very technical things that I've tried to kind of put in a not-technical format because I'm also not very technical. What I do know is, is that this software will enable us to compile everything within our office from an administrative and operational, sales, services, marketing, communications standpoint, all into one, into one program, which means everything from our website. We have software right now that enables us to track everything we do from a sales perspective. So, everything that we do from giving the Boy Scouts 35 pins to take with them to a jamboree, to providing 1,500 visitor guides, TV, radio promotion, on and on. Everything from the smaller to the larger things that we do and all of the databases that go with that. So, also, instead of having to coordinate and compile information that's coming in from a social media and a website perspective, the software will do all that for us and put it into different database categories. So, rather than having right now nine to 11 different databases, it'll all be in one system. So, anyone who answers the phone can access it, see what we've done for anybody at any given time in the past, plus all of our marketing can go directly through this program as well. But I'm more than happy to answer any specific questions that you may have in regard to it.
Questions?
No. It was your explanation, or the explanation in the packet was pretty clear.
Thank you. Thanks.
So, the request is simply to amend the budget, and then we'll go through the specs and the IT and then the purchasing manual steps after that.
Yeah, this action would actually appropriate a specific item for their operating budget for this type of software equipment. We would have... It's over 100... If it is over $140,000, so the actual contract and purchase would have to be approved by the council. We'll go through the purchasing manual. It requires developing some specs and sending out an RFP to see how many companies do this. If there's only one company, then we'd have to convert and do a whole source, but there's a process for that. Plus, as Morrison was saying, it's pretty technical, and we do have a part of our purchasing requirement. Whenever it's computer technology, we like to have IT involved in specs and review to make sure that we're getting, you know, something that's not a technical nightmare, but it's something that's state-of-the-art and manageable and that our tech people can help with. So, we'll go through all that. If this is approved, bring that all back to you.
But this is only a budget amendment?
Just a budget. This doesn't approve the purchase. It's just a budget amendment that appropriates the money so staff can go do the work. We don't want to go do the work if there's no money there to pay for it.
I would... I'd make a motion to approve the budget amendment.
Second.
And a motion and second. And that is approved four to zero. Thank you. Okay. That's going to take us down to ordinances, and we have several ordinances on first reading. First one being ordinance 3272. Mr. Dorman?
An ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 214 West Elm Avenue from RMI Residential Multifamily Intermediate District to HR High-Rise District.
Any questions?
Motion to approve ordinance 3272.
Second. That is approved four to zero. Takes us down to ordinance 3273.
An ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 498 and 519 South Jardoe Road from RTM Residential Two-Family and Multifamily District to RMI Residential Multifamily Intermediate District.
Questions?
Motion to move it to the second reading.
And that is approved four to zero. An ordinance 3274.
An ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 406 South Hester Street from RMI Residential Multifamily Intermediate District to HR High-Rise District.
Move approval.
Second. Mr. Dorman, real fast before we vote. This was the matter last week that I stepped out to abstain. Should I abstain on this vote also?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. And that's passed three to zero with myself abstaining. And our last ordinance on first reading, ordinance 3275.
An ordinance closing utility easements at property addressed at 2399 North Perkins Road and 798 East Lakeview Road.
Motion to approve ordinance number 3275.
Second.
That is approved four to zero. And on second reading, ordinance 3271.
An ordinance authorizing the sale of a certain parcel of property located at 4220 North Perkins Road, providing for citizen-initiated referendum of said sale in accordance with Section 4-2 of the city charter.
Is there a motion on ordinance 3271?
So move.
None is approved four to zero. Okay. Takes us down to reports from officers and boards. Mr. Dorman?
Nothing to report tonight, sir.
Mr. Galloway?
I just quickly report, I did send to the council one of our major transportation projects that's been around for a long time, since the first half penny was approved, was to jointly work with OSU to improve the intersection of Hall of Fame and Western Road. The first time that was addressed a few years ago, the cost came back much higher than we'd originally anticipated, and we basically tabled that for a period of time. We're continuing to coordinate very closely with OSU on the project. It's a much-needed project. Couple of months ago, we invited the Director of the State Department of Transportation to come and visit with representatives of the council and also of OSU, and we visited the site and asked the state to consider partnering with us on that project. And we received a letter from Michael Patterson, the Director of ODOT, that they've determined that the project does have state value, and they're going to contribute $3 million to the project. So, with that and the balance of our fund, Dr. Pete will be making a presentation to us in the near term about the specifications, and we'll get ready, develop a joint plan, and go out for bid. So, real excited about that and appreciate the state's help for me.
Very good. That'll be a big project, and we appreciate all the work from all the parties, both the city and OSU that have gone to help get this to where it's at. Thank you, everyone, there. All right. Anything from council? Any missing items from the council?
I mentioned Jim is on vacation.
Oh, I did fail to say at the beginning that Counselor Noble is not with us tonight. I apologize. That's why they're only four. Doesn't make much sense now, but it's good to get on there.
Everybody needs some time off.
That's right. Everyone needs a little time off, no doubt. All right. I have a couple of things. Reminder to the councilors that next Tuesday is the due date for any written reports for our quarterly reports from our standing committees. At our next business meeting on the 18th is when we'll make any verbal reports that need to be made. So, if you have any written reports, get them into Patty by next Tuesday, and then two weeks from now will be our standing committee reports. Tomorrow, on the radio, Vice Mayor Weaver scheduled. Reminder. And then on TV on Wednesday, Dr. Pete and I will be on TV 31 with Ms. Morrison. Okay. Couple other things. Just a quick reminder that hopefully you saw it in the paper, both a big ad. You've seen it on our television station, but we have another round of rebates for grants for storm shelters. So, get on our website. If you get the newspaper, there's a big ad there to apply for that grant. If you have questions, you can contact Valerie Silvers here at City Hall. So, I'm not going to get into specifics because I'll just leave out a detail. But anyway, these are rebates for storm shelters at residences. So, I would suggest people look into that. That is a wonderful thing. And then, the last thing I have, and I want to thank Development Services. If you haven't been lucky enough... She looked up real slowly when I said that. If you haven't been lucky enough to receive a public notice in connection with a land use item, whether it be Planning Commission, City Council, or Board of Adjustment, here's what the new ones look like. These have been going out the last couple of months, and I... This is the personal one I received at my house for an item, and they are so much more user-friendly than the old reports and the old notices. And so, I wanted to thank Development Services for taking in what people have said and how to improve things, to get better information to people when they're interacting with City Hall. So, thank you. Okay. Anything for upcoming meetings? Is there a motion to adjourn, City Council?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion and second to adjourn, City Council. That passes four to zero. City Council is adjourned, and we'll call to order the August 4th, 2014 Stillwater Utility Authority Meeting. And on the consent docket, we have one item, the approval of minutes. Is there a motion on the consent docket?
Yes. Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the consent docket. And that is approved four to zero. Takes us down to general orders, and the first one is authorize staff to execute Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality Consent Order 14-011. Hello, sir.
Good evening. I'm Bill Millis, Acting Water Utilities Director, here tonight to ask trustees to approve entering into a consent order with Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality. This consent order brings to closure an issue that we've been working through with DEQ since 2011, and it dates back to the summer of 2010 and summer of 2011, emergency diesel pumps and temporary electric pumps that we installed to prevent pressure dropping below 25 PSI in certain high-elevation neighborhoods in southwest Stillwater. By the time this, the DEQ issued a notice of violation, which is the precursor to a consent order, that happened in early in 2012, and by that time, we already had Guernsey on contract, working to develop the long-term study, which became, which was the kind of the genesis of the Water 2040 program. And so, we've been in contact with DEQ throughout this time, working together on keeping them informed of our plans with Water 2040. And they were aware of our plan for Water 2040, and they supported it, but they felt obligated, because of the temporary pump stations that we installed without permits, they felt obligated to take some sort of action. And this consent order is basically the minimum or the only action they have available to them to take. So, it does include a penalty, which is equal to the amount we paid in construction permit fees when we did... I'll back up a second. After we built the pump stations, DEQ wanted us to submit permit applications. We knew they would not, they were not permissible, they couldn't approve them, but we submitted them anyway at their request and paid the permit fees. They denied the permits, followed up with the notice of violation, and the penalty, which is now part of this consent order, all penalties are waived except for a penalty equal to the amount that we paid in permit fees. So, it's similar to what happens here if you start a building before getting the building permit. The city might charge double the fee or triple the fee. I don't know what it is, but it's a similar sort of a penalty. There will be, could be additional penalties if we fail to meet the milestones laid out in the consent order, which, by the way, the timeline and the scope of the consent order mirror our Water 2040 program. They don't... The consent order does not include the entire Water 2040 program because we're doing more than just what's required to meet this consent order, but the parts, the elements that are the same mirror between the two documents.
Sir, are you looking for a motion to approve this item? Council approval?
Yes, sir. To approve entering into the consent order and authorizing staff to execute it.
Well, I would so move.
Second.
Thank you.
Not like we had a bunch of options there.
There's a penalty, but it's a lot better not having water turned on. That's exactly right. It's kind of simple. Kind of simple.
People didn't have water. We're going to try to get the permit after we get people to want.
Okay. Next under general orders is to authorize amendment number two to professional service agreement with Guernsey.
Standing. Good evening, trustees here at Flady Water Utilities. Tonight, I'm requesting your approval for design contract amendment to Guernsey and Company for the Western Road water line. To remind you, this is the water line that's going to connect the existing 56th Avenue Water Tower to our distribution system at 44th and Western. To date, we've completed a conceptual alignment to determine the best location to put this water line. Turns out, it's on the west side of Western Road. That's the most feasible and cost-effective solution. That's the most feasible and cost-effective solution, so that's why we chose that. This proposed amendment authorizes the additional services needed to complete the real estate and the, and finish up design. As you can recall, well, we'll say back in March, I came to for real estate acquisition funding authorization, and then again, last month, Mr. Dorman presented a resolution of necessity for these easements. So with that now, we're green to go on the real estate actions for this. So once real estate transactions are all completed, we look at this water line taking about 120 days to complete. So that's the general timeline. Again, it's all contingent upon how smoothly real estate negotiations go with the landowners. So Guernsey provided a proposal to us that we negotiated for these services for $66,663. There are sufficient funds currently in the Water Capital Fund for this amendment without changing, making any changes to currently planned water capital projects. Pending any of your questions, staff recommends that you authorize the general manager to execute this amendment and authorize expenditures for the negotiated amount plus 10%, which is $73,330.
Any questions? Thank you. All right.
Recommend approve?
So move.
Motion to approve staff recommendation? Second. And a second. And that is approved four to zero. There being no other items, is there a motion to adjourn Stillwater Utility Authority?
So moved.
Second.
That's approved four to zero. We are adjourned.